I'd like to call the special meeting of Springfield Local Schools Board of Education to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Petrie.
Here.
Ms. Miranda.
Oh, Ms. Terry.
Ms. Terry, I'm sorry.
That's all time.
I've called him Mr., Miss, Mrs. Mr. Ray.
Here.
Mr. Hofer.
Here.
Mrs. Farola.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four, citizens' comments on agenda items. Citizens' comments on agenda items are welcome at this time. Participants shall be limited to five-minute durations. Seeing none. Item five, revol- resolution to approve the fund proposed collective bargaining agreement. It is recommended that the board approve the attached resolution approving the funding, approving and funding the proposed amended OPC 530 collective bargaining agreement for the 2022-2023 school year, Exhibit One.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Petrie.
Yes.
Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Ray.
Yes.
Mrs. Farola.
Yes.
Item six, five-year forecast update. It is recommended that the board approve the five-year forecast update, Exhibit Two.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Mr. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Hofer.
Yes.
Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Mrs. Farola.
Yes.
Mr. Petrie.
Yes. Item seven, personnel. It is recommended that the board accept approve the following personnel items. 7.1 voluntary release from employment certified staff. Approve a voluntary lease from employment with Springfield Local Schools due to a reduction in force for financial reasons certified employee Regina Carson effective 2022-23 school year. 7.2 ESY teachers. Employ the following certified personnel to work extended school year summer 2022 pending sufficient student enrollment at an hourly rate of 28-25, up to a maximum of 64 hours to be paid from federal funds. Kaitlyn Benner, Mary Beth Mitchell, Carol Tolson, and Melanie Smithers. 7.3 ESY aides. Employ the following classified personnel to work extended school year summer 2022 pending sufficient student enrollment at an hourly rate of 1457, up to a maximum of 56 hours to be paid from federal funds. Julie Davis, Vicky Kirby, Thea Milhoff, Amy Turnowski, Meredith Williams, Vera Rogers, Kathy Ray, Tracy Cole, Jan Kidd.
Make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Petrie.
Yes.
Mrs. Farola.
Yes.
Mr. Hofer.
Yes.
Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Ray.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item eight, citizens' comments. Participants shall be limited to five-minute durations. Seeing none. Item nine, adjournment. It is recommended that the meeting be adjourned at this time.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Hofer.
Yes.
Mrs. Farola.
Yes.
Mr. Petrie.
Yes. We are adjourned.
Thank you, everybody.
I would like to call Springfield Local Schools Board of Education regular meeting May 17th. Time is 6 o'clock to orders. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hofer.
Here.
Mrs. Farola.
Here.
Ms. Terry.
Here.
Mr. Ray.
Here.
Mr. Petrie.
Here.
Please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four. Ohio School Boards Association 2022 Business Honor Roll. Mr. Stauffer.
Well, I have some certificates of congratulations tonight to pass out to some local businesses. And I want to start by reading what the certificate says. With this, with this certificate of recognition, the Ohio School Boards Association offers its sincere thanks to Act Now Print and Promote, Uncle Tito's Mexican Grill, Pence Brothers Siding, and Teas and Things LLC for its, for their strong support of the Springfield Local Schools. The Board of Education, students, staff, and community also extend their appreciation. School business partnerships greatly benefit all involved. Local businesses play a crucial role in supporting their communities, schools, while students get real-world experience. This is, this support is especially important as school districts struggle with limited resources. Just as businesses support their schools, it is equally important that schools and communities support their local merchants and service providers. OSBA encourages everyone in the community to recognize Act Now Print and Promotes, I should say, recognize Act Now Print and Promote, Uncle Tito's Mexican Grill, Pence Brothers Siding, and Teas and, Teas and Things LLC as outstanding, for their outstanding contributions to the Springfield Local Schools. Sincerely, Robert M. Heard, OSBA President. I would also like to thank all of those local businesses that support our schools. Thank you very, very much. We couldn't do it without you. If any of those businesses are here, we would like to give you your certificates right now. So if you could come on up. And also, we are recognizing Uncle Tito's and Pence Brothers for their participation in the Class of 2020 COVID Project and recognition during the pandemic. Dustin, you want to help me?
Sure will. Thank you very much for everything that you do for us and the community as a whole. We really appreciate it.
I hear your medical work report. Thank you very much for your help.
I just like rabbits.
That's what I hear.
Thank you.
Pence Brothers. Uncle Tito's. And Teas and Things LLC.
Thank you very much for everything you do for us in the community.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Very well. Can I say something?
Sure, sure.
I've worked with Darlene too many times to count. Last year, she kind of jumped through hoops in many different ways to get every teacher, bus driver, and student a shirt when Young closed. We were told we couldn't do it, and we did it, and we also gave out two scholarships last year. Lori, this year, I said, I need some levy shirts, and people were walking in the door, and she would make them right then for teachers and staff. That really meant a lot to all of us. Both of them have supported many different times. Pence Brothers, on a personal, they, when COVID shut down our basketball team, they stepped up and gave our basketball team money so that we could have a basketball season. And this year, Uncle Tito's gave our youth softball team money so that we'd go out and get equipment so the parents didn't have to go out and do stuff. So, on a personal note, thank you for everything you guys do, and I know you guys are always there whenever we need you. So, thank you.
Item five, approval of minutes. It is recommended that the board approve the minutes of the regular meeting of April 19th, 2022, and the special meeting of May 3rd, 2022, Exhibit One and One A.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Petrie.
Yes.
Mrs. Farola.
Yes.
Mr. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Hofer.
Yes.
Motion carried. Item six, citizens' comments on agenda items. Citizens' comments on agenda items are welcome at this time. Participants shall be limited to five-minute durations. Seeing none. Item seven, payment of bills monthly. It is recommended that the board approve payment of bills for the month of April pending audit, Exhibit Two.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Hofer.
Yes.
Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Mrs. Farola.
Yes.
Mr. Petrie.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item eight, acceptance of financial reports. It is recommended that the board accept financial reports from the treasurer for April 2022, Exhibit Three, Four, and Five.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Mr. Hofer.
Yes.
Mrs. Farola.
Yes.
Mr. Petrie.
Yes.
Mr. Ray.
Yes.
Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Motion carried. Item nine, personnel. It is recommended that the board accept approve the following personnel items. 9.1 family medical leave request. Approve a family medical leave request for certified employee Ashley Poles beginning August 12th, 2022, and returning to work on November 7th, 2022.
Ashley's an intervention specialist for us at Shrop. Intervention specialist tutor, I should say, at Shrop.
9.2 tenure, approved tenure for certified employee James Mills, who was initially licensed on or before January 1st, 2011, holds a professional license, has appropriate credit hours, and has at least three years of experience in the district, and is therefore recommended for a continuing contract effective July 1st, 2022, pending proper documentation to meet requirements.
And Jim is a math teacher here at the high school.
9.3 employment. Reemploy James Mills from the reduction in force list per the negotiated agreement with SLAC as a math teacher at Springfield High School Junior High effective 2022-2023 school year. 9.4 employment. Employ Julia Rapasky as a 100% speech-language pathologist per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure effective 2022-23 school year.
And Julia will primarily be here at the high school, and that is a position that has been empty all year long. We have been unable to find anyone.
9.5 employment. Employ Monica Ruzik as a 100% foreign language teacher per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure effective 2022-23 school year.
And Monica will be teaching Spanish here at the high school.
9.6 employment. Employ the following as classified substitutes per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure effective the first day assigned. Misty Comiso and James Ryan.
And Misty will be driving bus, and Jim will be mowing grass this summer for us.
9.7 summer school credit recovery. Approve Steve Schaefer as an online summer school credit recovery grades nine through 12 instructor for summer 2022 at the approved rate of $28.25 from June 6th, 2022 through July 29th, 2022. This position is an online position with a maximum of six hours weekly for a total maximum of 48 hours.
And Steve is our credit recovery teacher here at the high school, and he'll perform the same duty this summer. He helps those students that have fallen behind in credits.
9.8 resident educator-mentor teachers. Approve the following teachers to serve as resident educator-mentor facilitators for the 2022-23 school year pending proper licensure and completion of required training on an as-needed basis. Cynthia Ferguson, Dana Floyd, Denise Fries, Michelle Hannah, Paula Murphy, Heather Phillips, Brett Zimmerman.
And these teachers are used only as needed. They mentor those teachers in the first four years of their career that are working under their first licensure.
9.9 resignation. Accept the resignation of classified employee Kathy Metz effective May 5th, 2022.
And Kathy was a cafeteria manager at Spring Hill.
9.10 resignation. Accept the resignation of classified employee Jennifer Heron effective the end of the work date, May 26th, 2022.
And she's a teacher's aide at Shrop.
I have a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Hofer.
Yes.
Ms. Terry.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Ray.
Yes.
Mrs. Farola.
Yes.
Mr. Petrie.
Yes.
Motion carried. Item 10, approval of graduates. It is recommended that the board approve the 2022 seniors listed in Exhibit Six to receive a diploma from Springfield High School after having met all requirements as set forth by the State of Ohio and the Springfield Board of Education. Exhibit Six.
And just a reminder, graduation is next Friday at E.J. Thomas Hall at the University of Akron. Graduation is at 7:30, and the doors open at 6:45.
I have a motion.
Second that.
Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Ray.
Yes.
Mrs. Farola.
Yes.
Mr. Hofer.
Yes.
Mr. Petrie.
Yes.
Congratulations to these graduates that are upcoming. Motion carried. Item 11, inventory disposal. Chapel Hill Christian School South. It is recommended that the board approve an inventory disposal for Chapel Hill Christian School South, Exhibit Seven.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Mr. Petrie.
Yes.
Mrs. Farola.
Yes.
Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Hofer.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 12, 2022-23 school day start and end times. It is recommended that the board approve the following school day start and end times for the 2022-23 school year. Springfield High School and Junior High Student Day, 7:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. Staff, 7:10 a.m. to 2:40 p.m. Shrop Intermediate Student Day, 8:30 a.m. to 3:10 p.m. Staff, 8 o'clock a.m. to 3:30 p.m. Spring Hill Elementary Student Day, 8:30 a.m. to 3:10 p.m. Staff, 8 o'clock a.m. to 3:30 p.m.
For the high school, that's no change. That's exactly what they've been doing this past year. For students at Shrop and Spring Hill, at Shrop, the students will have an additional 90 hours of instructional time next year, and at Spring Hill, it'll be an additional 60 hours. So, that is a really great thing for students.
So moved.
Second. Who's second in there?
Kenny's second.
Okay.
Ms. Terry.
Yes, but my only concern would be if we do have problems with parents' transportation, that we address it right away.
Agreed.
Mr. Ray.
Yes.
Mrs. Farola.
Yes.
Mr. Hofer.
Yes.
Mr. Petrie.
Yes.
Motion carried. Item 13, OPC 3-530 MOU contract extension. It is recommended that the board approve an MOU with OPC 530 to extend the collective bargaining agreement for one year, Exhibit Eight.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Ray.
Yes.
Mrs. Farola.
Yes.
Mr. Petrie.
Yes.
Mr. Hofer.
You don't.
Oh, okay. All right, motion carried. Item 14, lease agreement. Young Elementary property. It is recommended that the board approve a lease agreement with education alternatives beginning July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2024 for the amount of $10,000 per month for the property located at 3258 Nightover Drive, Akron, Ohio, 44312, Exhibit Nine.
And this agreement will produce additional revenue for the district, and it's also going to allow us to use the Boyer Building for other purposes.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Mr. Petrie.
Yes.
Mr. Hofer.
Yes.
Mrs. Farola.
Yes.
Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Ray.
Yes.
Motion carried. Item 15, overnight extended trips. 15.1 boys' basketball. It is recommended that the board approve an overnight extended trip for boys' basketball players and chaperones to travel to the University of Findlay to attend a boys' basketball team camp from June 10th, 2022 through June 12th, 2022. All expenses will be paid by participants. Board members have received copies of the trip proposal.
Do you want to vote on it individually?
No, no.
We'll do all of them.
15.2 girls' basketball. It is recommended that the board approve an overnight extended trip for the girls' basketball players and chaperones to travel to the Cedar Point Sports Center to attend the point team camp from June 14th, 2022 through June 15th, 2022. All expenses will be paid by the participants. Board members have received copies of the trip proposal. 15.3 girls' basketball. It is recommended that the board approve an overnight extended trip for the girls' basketball players and chaperones to travel to the Eastern Ohio Sports Camp to attend the girls' basketball team camp from June 22nd, 2022 through June 24th, 2022. All expenses will be paid by the participants. Board members have received copies of the trip proposal.
I'll make a motion.
Second that.
Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Hofer.
Yes.
Mrs. Farola.
Yes.
Mr. Petrie.
Yes.
Item 16, policy approval.
Sorry, where are you at? First reading? First or second reading?
This is second reading.
Okay.
Board members have received copies. Policies 16, 16, 1616, staff dress and grooming, new. 2271, college credit plus program revised. 2370.01, blended learning revised. 3216, staff dress and grooming revised. 4216, staff dress and grooming revised. 5511, dress and grooming revised. 5772, weapons revised. 6110, grant funds revised. 6114, cost principles, spending federal funds revised. 6325, procurement, federal grants, funds revised. 6423, use of credit cards revised. 7217, weapons revised. 8500, food services revised.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Petrie.
Yes.
Mrs. Farola.
Yes.
Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Hofer.
No.
Mr. Ray.
Yes.
Motion carried. Item 17, five-year forecast update. It is recommended that the board approve the five-year forecast update. Exhibit will be provided by Treasurer Chris Adams. I've circled two numbers. Really shows the importance of the levy. It's a lot, I think it's a lot more dramatic to people understand. Every year, it's required by the state to issue a five-year forecast twice. I think this year, we're doing it three times. We haven't met since the levy. Obviously, it was very disappointing, but I was reminded by some of my family members that are educators that we really made a huge stride from the previous levy. I mean, when you go from a no vote of 68% to a no vote of 51%, that's a huge gain for us, and it gives me hope that we'll push it through. But I wanted to talk about why that levy is so important to us. Without the levy, without the levy, at the end of 2024, we'll have about $800,000 in the bank. Now, mind you, the state would like us to have three to four million in the bank. And then the next year, we plummet to 400,000 in the hole. With the levy, though, if you go down to line 15.01, by the end of 2024, we'll have $3.3 million. What does $3.3 million do for us? It'll enable this board to be able to make decisions for the kids' future. It'll enable discussions on what should be brought back, or what we should do that's new. Discussions that we won't have unless this levy passes. I think we all need to understand, too, without Esser monies, we'd be in a heck of a lot worse shape. A heck of a lot. We would be in the negative, well, as you can see, in 2021, we were in the negative 2.6 million. With Esser monies this year, we're going to squeak by. We're going to break even of 358,000. But 358,000 can come and go on a budget like this. So, we're watching it daily right now, every day, and we'll do what it takes in the treasurer's office to break even. And people say, what's that mean? That means if, if a vendor that I normally pay within 10 days has to go 25 days, then it'll go 25 days. That's the bottom line. We'll have to do what we, we do. Coming up in the future, though, obviously, the healthcare situation is going to benefit us. How much is that going to benefit us? The first year is, is a mystery. It is. I would be foolish to put the full amount that they believe it's going to save us year one. Year two, though, if I'm comfortable with it, then that's what we're going to put on here. But it will save us. It was a good collaborative effort. It's a good move forward for, for the district. It's a good move forward for the treasurer's office because the budget is much simpler. We have a bill every month. We know what it's going to be. Versus self-insured, I don't know when people are going to get sick, so, you know, as you can, it's just a guess, basically. You hope and pray that everybody stays healthy, but that's just not the case. But, again, I want to go back to line 15.01.
But again, I want to go back to line fifteen point zero one. And if anybody asks, why is it so important for the district? It's because it'll enable us to be able to do things that these kids deserve. And it's been a long time since we've been able to do that, so.
Any questions? Thanks.
Chris, do you have anything else for treasurer's report or is that it?
Is this, when you did fifteen point oh-one and said with the levy, is that with about the same amount that we?
As you see, the first year of the levy in two thousand and twenty-three.
But I mean, is that the same?
Is that three point nine?
Yes.
Okay.
And you will see that next month in June, we'll have our first resolution for the levy. We're going to do it in June and July, so we're ahead of the game.
Okay.
Item nineteen, business managers' report. Dustin?
Good evening. Couple items for everybody's benefit. First of all, just a reminder that enrollment, especially kindergarten enrollment for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year is open. It's available on our website at springfieldspartons.org/register. So if anybody has kindergarten aged children for next school year, we ask that to get online and start registering now. Helps us plan and get everything in place for them for next school year. Tomorrow evening here at the high school in the junior high gym, there'll be a Summit County Public Health will host a free vaccination clinic here. And that'll be from four to six p.m. And that first, second, and booster doses will be available. And then just a reminder, I mentioned this last month, but just want to make sure that it gets out there. The free lunch for everyone is ending at the end of this school year, so beginning in August, we will go back to the pre-COVID method of free and reduced lunches where applications will be accepted at the beginning of the school year or throughout the school year. But primarily, we try to get those all turned in at the beginning of the school year and determinations will be made whether or not a child is on free, reduced, or paid lunch at that point for the school year or until the situation would change there. But that's a big change from recent memory with COVID being in place where breakfast and lunches were free for everybody, going back to the previous method of free and reduced lunches by application there. So just want to put that on everybody's radar so that they can plan ahead for next school year. Any questions? Thank you.
Item twenty, superintendent's report.
Yeah, first, I would like to start off by congratulating Andrea Novicki, who has received a grant of eight thousand dollars on behalf of the Springfield local schools from the GARR Foundation for our Educator Initiative Grant Project. And it is entitled, "Generating Classroom Energy Through Empowering Student Leaders." And it has to do with windmills. Board members, if you have not had a chance to be in Mrs. Novicki's classroom, please make a point to do that sometime next year, I guess. She does amazing things in there with the kids. It is really fascinating. So congratulations to her.
She gets a grant every year, too. Every single year, she gets a grant.
She does.
We hired her as a language arts teacher, but she soon bounded into other areas and excels at those two.
She's a treasure.
I will say, yes.
I also wanted to comment on us joining the Portage Area Insurance Consortium. That will begin July the first, and that will result in significant savings for the district, so that is definitely a positive. Regarding our May election, I was disappointed, just along with everybody else here. But I do want to thank everybody who was involved in the campaign effort. They did amazing job. Our students here are to be commended. It was outstanding what they were able to do. We'll continue to work hard. We're going to be back on the ballot in November. And like Chris said, please support us in November. You don't want the state to come in and take over. We want to be able to provide opportunities for our students. We want to bring opportunities back for them. So please support us in November. We had students that were involved in the Special Olympics last Friday at Nordonia High School. Mrs. Ziggabud, would you like to say anything about that?
Sure. We went, all three buildings, set a team, and they went up, they had a great time. Kids got, we got a school district medal. They had fun. It was perfect day. The weather was amazing and it was great to see lots of happy kids' faces running and cheering each other on and cheering their teammates on. It's, that's something I'd never experienced before, so it was a lot of fun to be there. So I'll invite you guys next time. They had, the band, the stands were full of people, so.
Well, and that's what it's all about, is the kids having fun. That's great to hear that they had such a great time and smiles on their face. That makes it all worthwhile.
Yeah.
And finally, here at the, it's not at the high school, but senior prom is this Friday.
Where are they going to hold that?
Does anybody remember where senior prom is? I think I have it written down. I do not know where it is.
I just wondered where they're holding it these days. Where they're holding the prom. I just was curious.
I should know that and I'm sure I was told where that is, but I just don't recall.
Is that the Knights Center?
I don't know. That doesn't ring a bell, but it could be. And that's it. Any questions? Thank you.
Item twenty-one, items worthy of your note. May twenty-sixth, students' last day. May twenty-sixth, end of fourth quarter, second semester. May twenty-seventh, teachers' last day. May twenty-seventh, graduation, E.J. Thomas Performing Arts Hall. June twenty-first, next regular Board of Education meeting, six p.m., Springfield High School and Junior High Community Room. Item twenty-two, citizens' comments, participants shall be limited to five-minute durations. Seeing none, board members informal. Anybody have something they'd like to bring?
Our prom is at St. Nicholas.
Okay.
St. Nicholas in Magador, okay.
Thank you, Miranda.
Go ahead.
Okay. First of all, I don't think it's possible to thank people too much. So adding to Mr. Stoppers' thank you, for those of us that are on the levy committee, I personally never heard a no, no matter. And I ask for, we ask for a lot of things. And parents, students, community members were so generous with their time and with their effort, and I just want to add the thank you. And then I want to thank, on behalf of all of us, the fifty-plus club, the fifty-plus alumni club, because yesterday, at the award ceremony, they presented ten two-thousand-dollar each scholarships to the class of 2022. That is, it's a wonderful thing that they do. And, you know, they, you know, they say it's because Springfield gave so much to them and they're happy to contribute, but I want to make sure that they are recognized. Mr. Anderson, who's president, was there and did this or handed it out, but that's an amazing effort on their part. Thank you. That's it.
Okay.
No talking.
Miranda?
I also want to thank everybody that worked on the levy committee. We had a lot of students that stepped up, a lot of community members that stepped up and really tried to push the importance of the levy and get the word out to not only their neighbors, but the whole community. Also, on, I want to thank the junior high teachers. I have middle school or junior high students. They themselves have pulled together and are making a fun day on Thursday. So thank you to everybody that donated. We had people that donated hot dogs and hot dog buns and money. So that's a big thing. And on Friday, the kids get to go to Cedar Point. Mr. Caslow and Mr. Hannah are making that happen. And I can only imagine spending an entire day at Cedar Point with that many kids. So looking at the weather, which my son does every single day, it's supposed to be a nice day, so hope to have fun.
I don't have any. Okay.
Question?
Spectrum cable update for spectrum channel ten-twenty-three. Two new things. You can find the program outlay at Springfield, www.springfieldtownship.us, and you can find the program outlay. Two new, two new things that we're showing, past program from the Springfield Historical Society interviewing Art Boyer. And also, just recently, we had the Top Twenty-Five Excellent Awards Banquet Program for 2022. That will be a two-reel program, so if you only see one reel and the other half's not there, there's two reels to that. Springfield Township Trustees Meeting is, that was done four-twenty-eight-twenty-two. The Top Twenty-Five was reel two and reel one, and the Lake Moore Council Meeting of five-twenty-two-twenty-two. Normally, I do alumni update. We have, I didn't do one this month because we have a hundred and plus graduates that will be alumni in a short period of time. So graduates, alumni, and that are out there now, write back to us. Tell us your experiences in life, both highs and lows. When you go through tough times, come back and tell that, tell us that, and we'll mourn with you. And then when you have great times, we will rejoice with you. So life is full of adventures, whether you're an alumni of Springfield, and that's who we support as a board. And we like to see those reports come in. It's fascinating to see what people have done over the years from Springfield local schools.
Thank you. I would just like to mention my wonderful pleasure that I had of going to the Top Twenty-Five banquet in recognition of Top Twenty-Five students and the teachers who inspired them. It's one of my favorite nights of the year, and the Top Twenty-Five banquet is an outstanding event, and I hope we continue doing that for many years to come. My work with some of the students on the levy kind of rejuvenated me and renewed me. I've been missing some contact with students since I retired from education, so work with those kids on the levy, Parker and Tammy come to mind. They were great kids. That's, that was a great bunch that helped us out, so thank you very much to them.
All right. Item twenty-four, executive session. It is recommended that the board go into executive session at this time to discuss preparing for, conducting, or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with employees and matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or rules or state statutes. And there will be no action at the end of.
That's correct.
Executive session. So.
Need a motion.
I need a motion.
I will make a motion.
I'll second that.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Down?
Yep. Thank you for being here.